Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the zoning board hearing for September 14th. I asked board members to make sure that the phones are on silent. The first hearing tonight is on a continued application. I just want to make a note to the board members and also to anybody that's listening. We did re-advertise this just as a precaution for the simple aspect. We had four members at the last hearing, and we got three quarters through the hearing, and then was asked, they asked for a continuance. So, for the sake of everyone, we did re-advertise it new. We will provide the same four members that were on that board the last time, and of course, we'll add the most senior member on the board, David Pine. So, on this panel tonight, there'll be myself, David Pine, Mark Casaloya, Robert Capizulo, and David Claro. So, with that, I'll read the...
David, you want to accept the minutes from last?
We don't have them. So, what we'll do on the minutes is Melissa will provide them at the next meeting, and then we'll get them, we'll get those executed and signed.
Okay.
Okay, this is on the continued application of Rain de Souza Silva, 120 Highland Street, for a variance relief from the provisions of Section 2.5 and/or 2.4 zoning bylaws for those provisions related to a parcel of land located on the easterly side of Highland Street, which parcel is owned by the petitioner and Camilla de Souza, and which parcel is shown on the assessor's sheet 49 lot 388. The variance relief is sought in order to permit the division of the subject property into two lots, one lot being that of 15,073 square feet more or less, containing a single-family dwelling, and the new lot to consist of 11,513 square feet more or less, to be available for single-family construction. The variance relief is sought for the lot area with frontage lot shape factor provisions of the bylaw in order to permit the proposed construction on both parcels. With that, Attorney Wickstrom is here. Why don't you come up in the front, too, or you can certainly put that on the board, Mark? There is an updated plan that was submitted tonight, and I think that was just a clarity of the questions that come up the last time, that a second driveway could not show on the plan that was in existence, and I'm not sure that that is still the case or not, but...
So, they'd be using the same curb cut as currently, but the proposed driveway is shown from...
So, this is a totally different plan that you submitted, correct?
Just with the proposed driveway, everything else is the same.
Because you didn't, this didn't go back in front of the planning board, correct?
Not with the proposed driveway.
Okay. Why don't you just get us updated from the last time, and then we can certainly take it from there?
The board had a couple of concerns that came up at the last meeting, and one of the questions the board has was whether or not an occupancy permit had issued on the current dwelling that's there, and so Mr. de Souza Silva found his copy of the bill of the occupancy permit. I just wanted to submit that, to clarify that for the board that...
Yeah, this is the, this is the...
Existing.
The actually occupancy permit.
Correct.
Yep.
Right.
The oxmit, limit of people, yep.
Mr. de Souza Silva also was able to speak to his immediate butters on the left and the right, and they agreed to submit to the board their agreement and consent to the board for the board's consideration to the petition and the plan to, for the variance. So, those, that's, that's the owners of, this is, this is 19 Highland, and that's the owner of...
If you like, I can read that into the record. Would you like me to read that into the record?
Yes, please, yes.
Okay. So, this, this here was submitted, I am going to read the town meeting, town planner's letter again. This is, letter is to the zoning board of appeals. Dear members of the Weemarsha Israel and Veronica Talmani, owner of the 17 Highland Street in Milford, we have reviewed the variance plan and plans of the unit de Silva and Camala de Silva to buy their property and build a new house on the lot. I agree and consent to the petition and ask that you vote in favor. That was dated today, and this one here is a same copy. No, this one's a different one.
Same...
Same people.
Same verbiage, but different people.
Same verbiage.
Yep, this is, yeah, copy and paste, and basically it's the same verbiage, and this one here is Hilario Rodriguez and Lucia Rodriguez, and they're on 21 Highland Street, and they've reviewed the variance plan and plans and, but to divide the property and build a new house on the lot, and they agree to consent to the petition and ask for their vote in favor. So, I will, I will put those also into the folder. In addition, I will go back to the meeting letter, the planning board. The planning board did review the petition above at their regular scheduled meeting in July 11th, and the planning board did recommend unfavorable due to lack of hardship on the applicant, and the planning board applicant states from town planner that the applicant requests variance to divide the existing conforming single-family lot into two lots. The existing 25,580 square foot lot is proposed to be divided into one conforming 15,073 square foot lot and what substantive 11,513 square foot lot for development purposes. The proposed substantial lot will require variances for lot area, lot width, and lot frontage. The existing house will remain on the proposed conforming lot. The property is substantially flat, regular-shaped lot. There are no conditions on the property that constitute any hardship. Therefore, they recommend that a board forward an unfavorable report to the appeals. So, with that, what I will do is I will go out to board members first, and then if there's any questions from anybody in the audience, make sure you address it through the board, and then we will try and answer anything for you. Prior to that, I just want to note on the plan that I've got, it's still, it's still wrong. You're carving out and you're entering not from the frontage of this lot, you're entering from someone else's frontage on a different lot, and it still does not have the driveway spur to the left of the house that has currently still been there. So, the lot, the plan's not accurate, and therefore, this driveway to a proposed new structure is not accurate either because it's not, it's coming off of another driveway. So, I just want to make those comments, that clearly this would have to go back to any planning board issue if that was the case, but I'll turn it over to the board members, and you can clearly provide your input, questions, comments. With that, John, you want to start? Who wants to start?
I guess out of curiosity, why wasn't the driveway drawn straight anyways? Why did you decide to cut it into the existing driveway?
So, they want, I think the intent was to use the, was to not have an additional curb cut. They already have two curb cuts with the, with the circle in front, and so, and so rather than add an, add an additional cut, they would, they could use that one, and there would be, if and when the lots were divided in ownership, there would be an easement to accommodate that slight corner of the, of the driveway that goes out, goes over the lot line a little bit.
Okay, we'll move on. Bob?
I honestly don't see any hardship here, and I don't, you're, you're lacking frontage and you're lacking area, and those are my comments.
Okay, Mark?
Is somebody living in the houses there?
Yes, Mr. de Souza's cousin.
Quite good neighbors, nobody's been there for three weeks. What a nice question. Is there an apartment downstairs?
No.
Is that somebody living downstairs with a kitchen?
No kitchen, no.
Where's the hardship?
So, so the hardship, the hardship is similar to the hardship that was, that was shown in the neighboring lot where the board in, in 2021 approved the division of a similarly sized lot into two lots, one being 15,000 square feet and one being 11,993 square feet. The hardship is that they've got a lot that's almost double the size of any other lot in this neighborhood, and it really doesn't conform to what the, what the, what the rest of the neighborhood looks like.
26,000 square feet.
Right, right.
When did you buy it?
Like six years ago, five, six years ago.
Were you aware that it had that irregular shape? Were there plans back then to try to do this?
It was, it's all one lot.
It's been, it was one lot then, yes.
And there were no plans six years ago to do this?
Not to my knowledge, no.
So, I'm going to make a comment, the same comment I made the last time, because the building commissioner has notified me on this, on a couple of different occasions, indicating from the first building commissioner to the second building commissioner that there's two living quarters in the home, there are two driveways, one leading on one side, one leading on the other. Clearly, at one point in time, and maybe it was taken out, I'm not sure, because of this hearing, that there are, there are two families living separately in the unit. The utilities have been separated according to the building department, and as I see it right now, again, you had time to correct the plan, and you didn't put the other driveway spur in that clearly is there, so whatever's on this plan is not even accurate. As an as-built plan, it's not accurate. So, I'm going to say this one more time. When I drove by again today, there is the gas meter with a second invoice, a second invert for another meter. So, I'm going to ask you the question, and you're going to be honest with me. Do you have separate utilities in this house on both sides?
I do not have, I try to...
So, you're telling me that you do not have two meters?
No.
And you do not separate the gas by unit?
No.
So, so when I bring the building commission up there, there'll be no issue about that?
No.
Okay. Because I don't, I don't see a hardship.
What I do over there, what I do over there is I try to put a second meter. I come to the, to the inspector here, I ask him, they say, no, you cannot do that because you don't live in a house, you cannot subdivide the housing in, in law apartment. So, the meter remained there because the ever so, put it there for me and never cut that thing off.
Someone called in for two meters, so, because there's two inverts there, one, one for each meter.
No.
Why didn't, why didn't the second driveway get on the plan?
Well, this is a, that guy mistake because I...
Again.
Again, for the second time, but I don't do like second driveway. What I say to you guys for the first time is I add a driveway...
You have to add through your frontage, you have to utilize your frontage for access.
So, I just adding that thing?
So, this is wrong anyways. All right, David?
I don't have any questions.
John?
I'm not sitting.
Well, that's right, you're not sitting, but you can, you can ask questions.
No, I'm good.
Anybody else care to be heard on this? Okay, you have your last word before we close the hearing, take it on to advisements, hot seat.
Right, so, so, I'd just like to remind the board...
Taken on its merit.
Right. Just like to remind the board that we did mention that we would suggest that the board adopt conditions, that being, that it be a one-story dwelling, limited to a one-story dwelling within the footprint that's shown on the plan, and that also, they recently did some tree removal in the back area, and, and in talking to Mr. Silva, he, he, he thought that it would, it might add to the property if he added a arborvitae or evergreen hedge along the back portion of lot, of the new lot, in order to sort of mitigate any potential issues with the, with the rear neighbor.
Okay.
So, so with those two, with those two conditions, we think that, that would mitigate any possible detriment to the neighborhood.
Okay. Question, comments? Is there a motion?
You got to close the hearing first, right?
I did, I, we had our last word before we closed the hearing.
Okay.
That was his last word. What, is there a motion on the table or not, recommendation? Make a decision, you got to make a motion one way or the other, whether it's good or bad, we'll just play it out.
I don't see a hardship here. I'll make a motion to deny.
There's a motion to deny, is there a second? Second by Bob? All those in favor to deny the request to subdivide? All right, one, two, three, four, that's unanimous. So, the unanimous of five that the, that the lot separation has been denied.
Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, sir, appreciate it. Let me just make sure that this is the right one, yep. Okay, there is a second hearing, and this is the hearing of 234 Purchase Street. Mr. Pine will be taking care of this one, I will be recusing myself.
Thank you.
Please, I really can have access to a full-size plan because I've only got one.
Is there one on the folder?
I can recuse myself also.
There's one in the folder.
All right, that, put that down, and I'm going to leave this down for the board.
Okay.
Mr. Petnari, how are you doing tonight? We only have four members, is that okay for you? Okay, all right. On the application of William Rowe, 228 Purchase Street, Milford, Mass., for a variance from the application provisions of Section 2.4 or 2.5 of the bylaw, as those provisions relate to an existing two-family residential structure situated on Purchase Street in Milford known as number 234 Purchase Street, and the adjoining parcels owned by the petitioner, the relief is sought in order to permit the re-division of the subject property, changing the property lines in a fashion that will allow single-family construction on the additional property. So, guys, we just got four of us, right? Okay, so there's four of us sitting, nothing, okay? On 8/9/23, the planning board made a favorable recommendation this, for this variance. So, Mr. Petnari, welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Bill Rowe and his wife Jane live at Purchase Street, at 228 Purchase Street. This house is located at 234 Purchase Street. This house, per the assessor's records, was built in 1800. Now, I'm a little skeptical of that, but we know that the house has been for quite a while longer than zoning has been in Milford, and certainly longer than the Rose family has been associated with the property, which goes back almost 100 years. Bill has lived on that property since he was a child. They have consistently and continuously owned the property in that general area, and they have never had it subdivided. They're now in their 70s, and they are now looking to the process that would entail selling the property that they've lived on and the other property that they own. The first thing that has happened is they have received an offer to purchase the two-family that is located at 234 Purchase Street. 234 Purchase Street is the perfect place to start this process because that house is laid out on a lot, again, that's over 100 years old, and it's laid out in such a fashion as to be 10 feet narrower than the lot width requirement currently in force on the bylaw, and also because that house is particularly affected by the existence of a single-family residence about halfway down the lot line that is intruding into the lot itself, creating a lot shape factor that is not consistent with the bylaw's provisions. So, they are here this evening seeking a variance from the lot width factor and from the lot shape factor, and we're here to suggest that both of those requests are reasonable in light of the following facts. This house has, again, been on this property for a minimum of 100 years. There is no change in either the use, the intensity, or the configuration proposed. What this will enable the Rose to do is to market the two-family house, sell it as an existing two-family house with, completely legally and consistent with zoning, with the provision of the variances requested, and then it will enable them to turn their attention to the remaining acreage. They own substantial acreage up in, in that Purchase Street area. None of the resultant lots that are shown on this plan will need a variance of any kind. They will all be buildable in and of themselves. So, they're here tonight to suggest, first, that the variance makes sense, that it does not in any way encroach upon the values or the safety or the integrity of the aesthetics of the people in the neighborhood, and finally, it will enable them, as they are now in this stage of their lives, to utilize the assets that they have marshaled all of their lives and cared for all of their lives for their own benefit and their own retirement. I don't want to be fresh about this, but this seems to me to be a very, very simple request. The house is there, the house will continue to be there, there will be no changes to the house, its use, its intensity of use after this happens. At some point in the future, it is likely that there will be two other residences constructed on the additional acreage, but we're not here tonight to talk about those because what we're doing tonight will set the stage for them to be able to do those on lots which 100% conform to zoning. I don't need to take any more of your time, we're here to answer any questions that you or any of the butters might have, and I'll turn it back to the chairman.
Mr. Petnari, can you come up for a second?
Certainly.
Can you explain to me, this is the house right here, right?
Yep.
That's the family house.
Correct, two-family house.
Two-family house.
Yep.
So, they're looking at, do a second lot, which is this lot right here?
They're, primarily tonight, they're looking to get this lot approved with this jog in it, which is where there's another residence, and because it's less than 150 feet of linear frontage where it chokes down because of this house, that would make this lot legal and conforming. And then, the resultant lots are just shown here for purposes of the preparation of this plan, but that would be a conforming lot, to answer your question, yes.
Okay, so they're looking at, so tonight we're here, we're here for this right here, to, to separate this lot and this lot right here?
No, we're here tonight to define this lot in modern terms, the way this house was originally constructed back 100 years ago. These lot lines have been honored, but they're not part of any plan.
So, we're looking to establish this lot, is that correct?
No, that lot exists, that lot exists. We're looking to, to define this lot with these lot lines, which are practically there. They've been honored, they, that's where they cut the grass, that's what they've, they've always utilized as the lot lines, but they've never been part of any plan. So, if he was attempting to sell this property, at the present time, there's no plan which defines the lot line that's here.
Can you reference it, Ernie Lot A, Lot B?
Yeah.
Ernie, you're talking about this here?
Yeah, this...
So, you're trying to reference, it's two different owners?
Yeah.
No, no, two different owners.
Okay. This is, this, in fact, I think the gentleman's here that owns this lot. Okay. This is, this is the offensive part of the lot. It's too narrow.
Got it.
And this is the offensive part of the lot shape factor because it's got this jog in the middle of it.
So, you're right now, these are two, dated two different people.
Correct.
But there's no real definitive lines, and how old is this?
It's definitive right here.
Yeah.
Right here, David.
Okay, I got you. Yeah. The lines up here are not definitive.
This line is...
We'd like to make them definitive, yes.
This line is, so you want to make this line...
Really, it's this one. Bisected. Correct.
Okay, what are these access easements?
He's got, he's, Billy can answer that question. He's got, he's, this property's been in the family for so long that people...
Is this Rose Lane, by the way?
Get aside, get aside.
Mr. Petnari, can you come back to...
So, this is, Mr., can you come up here?
Show them where that is.
I'm still, I'm confused.
So, this is Rose Lane right here?
This house.
Yep. Correct?
Yes.
Okay, it goes back to a house right here?
Longhand, and it's been there a long time.
Okay, so, this isn't, this isn't an access right here, then?
This lot line is real.
For the most part?
No. This lot line is... That this property was conveyed by.
Right.
This creates the narrowness on this lot. Where this house is...
Barn originally, and then they made it, they made it into a house.
Get enough frontage?
Okay.
Can't get enough lot width?
Sold it.
So, we need a variance from lot width?
Ended like this, that's why this jog is there.
To create this lot right here?
Correct.
So, by, by now, this is all on one lot?
This is not a buildable lot, for now.
Yes, right.
Okay.
For zoning...
Because I'm just wondering why you just didn't continue this line all the way down here.
No, because, no, that's, that goes into the...
How does it...
That goes over there somewhere.
All over here.
Maybe develop later.
Haven't solved.
In theory, this is going to become one lot.
Could be, yes.
Yeah, okay.
They're going to build a house here and then a house here later on.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're right.
It's endorsed that, so you owns, correct.
Not a buildable house.
Right, yeah.
They're looking at, is this lot line that's being created tonight?
It's being, it's a hard word, like we, but being, talking about...
Well, the shape factor, they don't have enough frontage.
So, you're going to have, you're going to have, this house is going to stand on its own lot?
120 feet.
And will be, be able to be severed from the rest of their property.
And, and these are different owners?
Correct. This is owned by Bill and Jane, and this is owned by Mr. Crandall.
Okay, Mr. Crandall doesn't object. Okay, all right. Coach, you understand that?
Yep.
Okay, I understand, okay, all right.
Pre-existing.
See if they have any more questions before I open up.
So, what you're looking for, variance is a frontage on this lot in the shape?
Width, width, only width and lot shape.
What's the, what's the frontage on this?
The frontage?
I didn't understand.
Is it 100?
It's right here, right?
It's 128.
Talking about...
Okay, all of them.
There it is.
I got you.
They're going to gain width.
On this lot.
Right, 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 I see the frontage right here, the 126.
Though, I think the variance is A, this lot...
Why don't you cap a delta five, you should know about deltas.
The width is, you need a variance from the width of the lot, it's too narrow for us to get by this curve.
Okay.
So, so you're going to have a lot, this is, okay, all right, you guys all set?
All set.
Okay, does anyone from the audience have any questions? Go, go ahead.
Yeah, can I just confirm?
Just say your name and where you live.
This is Jesse Crandall, I'm at 236 Purchase.
Okay, go ahead, thank you.
So, I got, I got a map of what was going on here. It looked like, it looked like the variances, the lines that were required, in other words, for footage on either end, when you buy a new house, went directly through the existing house. So, in other words, you can't sell the house because it doesn't, doesn't...
It's non-conforming.
It doesn't meet the requirements of a current sale. Is that what we're talking about here?
Correct.
So, the appeal is, this is where it's been, it doesn't meet the, the old, the new standards, can I sell it anyway as long as it stays the way it is?
That's part of it.
Okay.
That's fair.
Yeah, but that, to, yeah, that, and the other part is that they're looking for another lot, they're cutting another lot out of that, so now there's going to be two lots.
Two lots, is it beyond the no-build zone line? Or is that, Billy, is it further?
No, that, that would be, well, that's wetlands you're talking about.
Is that what you mean, the wetlands there?
Well, we had, we had, we had people come in and stake it out.
Okay, then, yes, the answer is, the, the creation that the plan will do overall will be to facilitate the marketability of the two-family house.
Yes.
And to create an independent, conforming lot, which we are not prepared to discuss in terms of wetlands, in terms of zoning, in terms of acreage at this point, because we just don't know.
Sure.
But that's what the result of this plan does, because the, the insertion of the lot line in the place we are proposing to put it will facilitate the sale of the two-family house in the configuration that was roughly laid out in, which doesn't conform.
If you want to, if I could put the house...
Correct.
So, if one step at a time, you sell the house, then move on.
From your lips to God's ear, but yeah.
Yeah.
We don't know that yet either, but...
Did you see the plan that we're referencing, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, does that, are you all set, sir?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have any more questions? No, no more questions? Okay.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bill has approached that... Bill has approached this by trying to come up with what he considers to be the best idea to enhance the marketability of his property and the least inconvenience to the neighborhood and the surrounding community. This is the starting point that we're at. The potential sale of this two-family is something that he is exploring fairly vigorously. I can't report to you that we're confident that it's going to sell soon, but if we get the requested variance relief, the likelihood of its sale is enhanced significantly, and we're here to suggest that that's what his family has held this land for, for as long as they've held it. So we appreciate your time and thank you very much.
Okay, you all set, Mr. Pennari? Okay, I'm going to close the hearing. Anyone got any questions or anything?
I'm all set.
Questions, Coach?
Make a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve, second, okay, let me just write this down. Okay, yeah, so, Coach, you make a motion to approve, everyone's approved, yep, okay.
Second.
The second, third, okay, all approved, you're all set.
Thank you very much.
Okay, have a good night, thank you.
May I have my, my.
Yes, there's one here, this one's got to go in the file.
I'm going to let you figure that one out.
Probably because I folded it wrongly.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Do you need to sign the plan if this is the right one?
I don't know, is that what you want me to do?
Oh, usually I sign the plan if it's approved or not. What's the next one?
Okay, I'm all looked on here.
Okay, that's, that's. All right, this is, this is on the application of the Pendoffe Company. Why don't you come on up? I'll read the, the notice. Okay, one, two, three, four. All right, so on this one here, you guys were on that, all of you were on that last one, right? Okay. So Bobby Cap, you're the, be the voting member on this one here, and Dave will be on the, on the next one if we have one, yeah, okay. All right. So this is on the application of the Pendoffe Company, Inc., Burlington, Mass. It's for a special permit and/or amendment of the existing special permit in relation to a parcel of land owned by Maig Park Corporation, 11 Arias Way, Milford, which parcel consists of 1.5 acres more or less, located at the northwesterly intersection of Route 140 and Green Street. Special permit is sought to permit the changes in the layout of the facilities on the property as so to provide two stacking lanes and a bypass lane for entry into the facility and a relocation of the parking lot and vacuum stall facilities. So with that, on the application, I believe I even have the decision from the last time that was in here. In a nutshell, apparently the applicant, the current owner of the business, was not aware that he had to come back here for a updated special permit to be placed into that, the company's name, as this particular special permit runs to the applicant and not to the property. So concerning the, the application, they're indicating the western portion of the parking lot is to have some pavement removed, vacuums to be relocated to the western side of the building, the parking lot to be restriped for vacuum stalls and stacking lanes. Accordingly, according to the use and intensity regulations, the use regularly schedules that indicates that the commercial car wash is unauthorized use within the CB district upon the issuance of the special permit, special permit, of course, by this board, which we have already done. Its use, existence, and allowable within the special permit, there's going to be some modifications, and the proposed alterations will provide the two stacking lanes and bypass lane, which I believe were approved before, to ensure vehicles will be able to circulate around the site and without backing up on Green Street. The use is existing and proposed alterations will improve improvements to the current site conditions by reducing the overall amount of impervious area of the parking lot while it is also providing a better stacking and site circulation. So with that, I do want to take the, the time to read the planning board letter. So the planning board did review this, were you part of that planning board meeting?
Not their meeting.
Okay. The planning board reviewed the petition listed above at their regular scheduled meeting held on September 5th and recommends the following. The planning board has made a favorable recommendation, and the town plan letter indicates that the applicant requests a special permit approval to allow for the continued use of the existing drive-through car wash on the property. The prior 2016, 2016 special permit for this site was granted to the applicant Green Street, Green Street Auto Spa, only and did not run with the land, and the, the decision here is attached. Subsequently, the current operator acquired the business, did not seek an amendment to the special permit, and also proceeded to notify the site in violation of the approved site plan by adding vacuum stations within the queue lanes. The applicant now seeks to remedy all past violations by seeking the special permit for the current operator and by reversing, revising the site features to return the queuing lanes to an appropriate safe configuration. The originally approved queuing lanes are to be restored, the vacuum stations relocated to the rear of the building, and a substantial area of excess paving is to be removed and replaced with the landscaping. If that is completed, and the zoning, the planning board did indicate a favorable recommendation, be sent off to this zoning board. So with that, if you've got a plan you can put up.
Sure.
I think the board would like to see that along with the people that are in the, within the building tonight. Are you giving us the 2016 plan?
Unfortunately, I did not bring a copy of that. I know that was included with the packet for everything. I can have something forward over to you guys if you haven't received that. But essentially, we copied over the stacking lane from the 2016. And in terms of anything else regarding the parking area that's there, we just kind of squared some things off more, made sure that they had the appropriate sized drive aisles.
All right, can you do me a favor?
Sure.
If you, you've looked at the 26, 2016 plan, correct?
Yes.
Tell us what's, what was on the 26 plan, the 2016 plan that is now different on this plan.
So with regards to 2016 plan, there was some parking stalls that were located over here, there was a handicap stall that was located here, and then it was proposed with these bypass and stacking lanes on the side here.
Which were originally in place.
I'm not sure if the striping was in place, but at least the total width and everything was there in terms of overall pavement and everything. As it currently stands, though, there are seven spaces here that are angled, I'd probably say maybe about a, like a 60-degree angle or so, that has some vacuum stalls that are there. And then that, because of those spaces being in the way, have chewed up some of the stacking lanes that should have been utilized. So essentially, with the new proposal, we'll cut out the excess pavement, as you mentioned. We're going to be having several extra vacuums that will be there, but in terms of at least like a sort of parking count or anything with those, everything will jive with what these zoning allows are there.
So currently, can you point where the vacuums are going on the new plan?
On the new plan, we have eight of them located over here, and one of them will be handicap accessible, and then we'll have 10 on the side over here.
All right. That's an awful lot.
Can I speak?
No, I want, no, I need to, I'm not done yet, excuse me. So I have the 2016 decision, and I want to make sure that we're, all the board members are on the same page concerning the last decision. So the last decision, the property, so the applicant proposes at that point in time they were going to do repair as well. So that repair is not there. So with the conditions, the proposed use, display of mowers and equipment shall be of the rear of the property, so those, those repair stuff is no longer part of this, correct? There'll be no automotive repairs, there's no mowers or any type of leases going on back there?
Nope.
So the special permit. There was no indication of any vacuums on the site at all? So what, what I'm going to do, I'll let you continue, and then I'll, I'll ask the board members for questions, and then I'll go to the public and see if they have any, okay?
So I mean, as far as anything else goes, generally, as of right now, we will be maintaining essentially the same, if not adding an extra stall in terms of the original parking that was approved in 2016. If I recall correctly, I believe it was only 20 spaces that were provided. We're currently going to be providing 20 total spaces. There is four existing ones down here, and Mr. Pendoffo has indicated that there's going to be about three to four employees that are there. Remaining spaces would be for the, the vacuum and everybody that's using the car wash to, you know, go in there and take care of anything that they need.
So just a quick question, the two garage bays that are on that side, are those closed off now, or the garage overhead's still there?
Let Mr. Pendoffo handle that portion.
This is really confusing what's happened here. So I dealt with Larry Duncan for about two months.
Okay.
And here's what happened. So we're not looking right now for approval for all the additional vacuums. So they, they've leased this place for three years, Golden Nozzle, they took it over from whoever was the owner, okay? I do their work, I do their construction, and so I help them doing these things as well. So when I went to Larry, Larry said, Joe, they don't, they don't have a special permit to operate. So they've been there three years, and what they did, which they shouldn't have done, is they put those vacuums against that wall. The, the plan that has two lanes and the fire lane, that was back in, are you saying 2016? And that was done in order for them to get the, all those garage bays to be automotive and whatever they were along there, okay? So Larry said, Joe, you can't even go for this until you just go, go to the board.
Send it, yeah.
And just get a permit to be, I guess you need a special permit just to operate the car wash.
Correct.
And then Larry said, okay, then if you get that, which, you know, that should be fairly easy, and then he said, then you can apply to the planning board to do that. The reason that's like that is I had to show Larry what we wanted to do before he would even say, I'm going to tell this board that it's okay. So I don't know how this got all mixed up, but he told me we're just going to get a simple special permit to operate. All that is a total different thing. And the argument was going to be, not the argument, but the thing was going to be, if they can do the car wash, I mean, I'm sorry, if they can do the vacs in the back, all those uses, all those automotive uses and repair places and detail goes away. They haven't been used, it all closed up, but they would lose that right as a trade-off for getting the vacuums. And so Larry said to me, Joe, you can't even file for the planning board until you get the special permit, just allows you to operate. So I don't, and then someone said it was, there was a hearing on the 5th, September 5th?
Nobody has informed me of anything.
I know, so that's where I don't know where that's coming from.
The only comment I had received from Larry Duncan, there was a typo for Green Street I left off the ether, and as far as I know, that was the only correspondence that I directly had.
I don't know where this went.
So, can I ask a question? So in 2016, we approved, what, a car wash and a repair facility?
Correct.
Is that correct?
No, no vacuums.
No vacu, and then those people left and someone else took over?
So they sold the business, and then someone else took over, and they didn't come here.
They didn't come here, they just.
And then they put all those vacuums in.
And they, they've been running the car wash, the car wash is open and it's running now? Now is the owner here tonight?
No, not the owner. The Golden, the reason, they knew nothing, when they took over, I think it was like three years ago, Golden Nozzle is the owner, they knew nothing about having to get a special permit to operate. They weren't told. So they have a new lease with that guy that started three years ago. The only reason we found out about this is because, I guess Larry said there was another inspector that's not there any longer, and the new inspector is there. And he said, when I said Larry, we'd like to do some new vacuums, he said, he, then he looked into it, he said, you know what, you don't even have a special permit to operate.
Okay, but let me just, so.
No owners here.
So there's no, there's no owners here?
That's a problem.
That's a problem, yeah, so.
They don't care enough.
Yeah, I, I think we should just vote no and close the hearing. That's what I think we should, that's what I'm in favor of doing. Because there's a lot of stuff going on here, and certainly the owner of the property knew that you needed a special permit, because he's been in front, when he went from, when he did a new lease with a new company, he's been here before, so he knows it's supposed to be a special.
Well, I'm not sure that that's concerning. I would be favored to continue this, but we want ownership here, because if an owner can't come in here for a special permit, you don't get the special permit.
Well, the, okay.
Why can't the owner be here?
I don't know why, he.
They, no, he could be. Are they better than, than?
No, 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 I, I understand, there's a lot of confusion here. So, but no, what you're saying though is, you would say shut down, they can't operate?
Yeah, we have the right to do that, yeah.
I know that.
Yeah, well, they're operating right now without us anyways, whatever, like this, whatever, so, yeah, that's.
I totally understand that.
That's what I, that's what, that's what.
Are you talking about shutting down until they come in?
No, I'm talking about making a motion, all I can control tonight, I'm talking about making a motion to deny this application. That's what I'm, we all.
Can you come back for three years?
That, they, well, that's, that's not my problem.
Correct.
But that would be how I would handle this, is I would make a motion to deny the hearing, to deny the application.
At this point, what is the application for? Is it for all this?
No.
To transfer, to transfer the ownership.
Just allowing us to be able to operate a car wash.
And that's it.
And the thing that they did, that if you want to say the only change was, they put up those vacuums against the wall. And you could say, I suppose, we'll transfer the thing, but you have to take those vacs off. Then everything else is a whole different thing, and if the planning board does not approve that, we can't do that.
All this is off the table.
Well, I know, but, I know, I'm not trying to be disrespectful to you, whatever.
No, I understand.
But I don't really care what the planning board wants to approve, doesn't want to approve. This board approves what we want to approve, so to, you keep representing, it's not fair to you, because you don't understand what's going on from our point of view.
I do know.
It'd be, so, we, we're going to want to see the whole layout of exactly how the business is going to be run, how many vacuum cleaners, all that stuff, we're going to want to see all that stuff.
We want ownership here.
So it's not like, it's not like the planning board decides, we decide what happens here, not the planning board.
I understand that.
So I don't care, you keep talking about the planning board, it's not fair to you though, because you don't understand the process of what we're doing here.
Right.
He's been doing, yeah, he's been doing...
I did exactly what I was told to do though. Go get your, just your, nothing to do with that. Just go get a permit to transfer. End of story.
Yeah.
And that's what I was here for tonight. Nothing to do with vacuums or anything.
Well, let me, let me make a comment.
Yeah.
How many locations you guys have?
Fifty-four. They, no, no.
You can't send, they can't send an attorney or an owner's representation to this board for a special permit for a car wash? That's why he wants to shut you down totally and then you're gone for two years. So...
Right.
That's why I came in and said, "Well, you know what? Maybe there's a continuance and maybe they should show up and start paying attention to business and be in front of this board the way they should be." And not sending someone that's in the construction field to do their job. That's what he's saying.
Okay.
That's what he's saying.
Yeah.
So, with that, and is there anybody else here to be heard? Yes.
Well, I, but, I just like to, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion that we deny the application. I don't know if there's a second or whatever like that, but I'm gonna make a motion tonight because this is ridiculous. This is ridiculous.
And I had that down for two years.
Yeah, that's right.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter. They're operating without a permit anyways.
We continue it.
No, you, to be, to be, no, look, you're not even, you're not even an employee of the company. You're just acting here as a good Samaritan. So, you, so, I, you know, so, I'm gonna be respectful to you, whatever.
Yes, sir.
There's no, I'm here talking to no one for a company that owns 54 of these things. You know, it'd be, so, it's crazy. This is craziness.
But, so we can't withdraw it though? Continue it?
You're not allowed to do anything because you don't work for the company.
Yeah, but I applied for the applica, I'm on the application though. And I'll just pull it out of there.
You do, you do, you do work for the company?
I do work for them. But I did what, just what I was told to do and that's not fair. If you're gonna shut a place, I did exactly...
Larry told them.
I was, I did exactly what I was told to do and I spent two months with Larry, this, this and this. And he said, "I won't, I can't say, 'Okay, you can operate,' until you go get your special permit." That's all, is this, you're saying originally a special permit was to actually have a car wash there? Because I don't...
Well, I'm not gonna debate, I'm not gonna debate with you. They have 54 of these. They, I'm sure they have legal counsel. This is very confusing to me, how this happens, whatever like this. But my recommendation is that we, is that I'm gonna make a motion to deny the application.
Does that mean we can't come in for two years? They're gonna...
I'm not, I'm trying to be respectful to you, but you're not an employee of the company. So, I'm not gonna sit here and debate with you. I'm just not.
I'm just, that is a question. Are we out for two years?
It would be if it gets voted.
Are we allowed to withdraw it?
Are you representing the company?
I'm John Federico with Garia and Halman. I wasn't aware that this was that complicated a situation. Honestly, I thought that the use was attached to the property, not necessarily to a specific application.
I've never attached to the property.
So, that is something that I personally wasn't aware of there. I would like to request the continuance if that is possible.
How could you not be aware of that? I'm just tired of the bullshit that's happening. How could you not be aware that a variance is attached to the property? Do you work at Garia? Do you know, do you know, do you know what time it is tonight?
I do.
I mean, so you don't know the difference between a variance and a special permit?
I, I do, but...
Okay, well, you know, it's just...
All right, well, right now, we've got a motion.
I'm at a meeting right now. We're gonna say anything right now. Everyone's gonna say anything.
You got a motion on the table?
I got a motion to deny the application.
There's a motion on the table to deny the application. I'll second it if you wanna have a discussion. If there's no discussion, then I'll take a vote. Dave, do you have a question?
I would prefer to continue it, to be honest with you. I think this is...
Well, he's requesting a vote. He's requesting a vote for a denial. He has the right to get that vote. So, with that, anybody that's in favor of denying the application, raise your hand. Okay, seeing no hands raised, then I'll take a motion to continue the hearing.
I'll second that.
There's a motion by Dave to continue, Mark, to continue the hearing? Is there a second?
I seconded your motion.
It was my motion. So, with that, with that, there's a second. All those in favor to continue the hearing? All right, that's unanimous.
No, I'm against.
You're against it. Two in favor, I mean, four in favor and one opposed.
I'll do it again.
So, right now...
David, I would just say that I would agree with Mr. Fine to close it down for two years. But this gentleman...
The hearing's closed?
...was slight to us through Larry.
Yeah.
So, he's doing what Larry told him to do.
No, I agree. I agree. That's why, that's why the vote ended up to be a continuance.
Again, I agree with, I would have no problem with closing it down for two years.
I agree with David Fine also.
But this man, you know, he's doing what Larry told him to do.
The problem though that I have is that, you're correct, the problem I have is that they own 54 locations. If this was a sole proprietorship, then to say, like, "I don't know what the process is," that might make sense to them.
I agree 100%.
But to have 54 of them, they're not a, you know, that doesn't, something doesn't make sense to me.
Doesn't faze them enough to even be here.
Yeah, yeah, it's...
So, right now, can the building commissioner shut it down?
Yes, he can.
That's the other bottom line.
Couldn't.
He can. And Larry told me that. And Larry said, "As long as you go to the board and just get the permit to operate, then you get that and we'll leave you alone because we didn't know about it." And then he said, "Then you go to the next thing." That's all we, that's all we're supposed to do tonight. And they, like, I could, I could apply for it. I understand your whole setup now. It's different probably than a lot of places because usually if you just lease it, someone else takes the lease over. I totally understand this. They gotta get a journey involved now and do it right. I totally understand.
So, this, so this currently, right now, the hearing's closed? It's voted on and it's continued?
Raise their hands.
Do you want, would you like to say something?
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
My name is Avery Kajado. I live on the little green street off of the big green streets of the ponds in my backyard and it is a car wash. I definitely remember the special permit in 2016 and the gentleman that was doing the body shop. And he was very respectful with his noise until the Nash family sold it. And those bays in the back, it definitely being used and it being used for car detailing. So, all I even hear in my kitchen is the buffing machine. I hear the attendants. I have, I can show you 10 calls that you're alone.
Now?
I thought you said they weren't being used.
Yep, both. You can come over to my house, 33 B Green Street, come sit on my porch and make your nice tea. Even with my windows closed and I just got brand-new windows, I can hear the attendants screaming. I have 10 calls into them. I got a response back from two, from Sean, and I didn't get the last one until I found this number to cooperate. And the other day was profanities and there's plenty of children on my street. If I didn't hear that in my house, there's a different story. Saturday and Sunday, I don't mind. I know it's the busiest day of the week, but all week long, I hear their voices. I hear their machines. I hear the rolling of pushing the car through, which is understandable. You have a business, but they're not being very neighborly with the noise level.
Okay. Gary?
Harry Onision. I live at 18A Elm Street on the other side of Route 140. Getting back to similar to what you were speaking about. When Alan Nash ran, it was a small-time cleanup shop car wash. Since the new owners had come in about two years ago, I think they did a refitting of all the equipment inside. And it's kind of like living next to Hope Dale Airport with just small planes coming in every now and then. And now it's like living next to Logan Airport because all you hear are blowers and like jet airplanes. And I'm a businessman. I understand business. But they've done nothing to mitigate the noise factor for the neighbors. And I don't know if that's curtains on the exit. I don't know if that's building walls like they do on Mass Pike and they stop that noise around, but it's just, you can't go outside, you can't sit on your porch. It's just brutal from 7:00 to 7:00 or 7:00 to 8:00 because now they're operating a 12-hour, 12-hour window. And it's difficult.
Well, the original application said 5:00.
And no vacuum.
And no vacuum.
Can I say one thing? I, I'm not, first of all, the, they took over the lease. Are you saying like all those doors on the back of all people who are in there working and stuff?
Car detailing. I can hear them. I would call it all day long.
Those are all closed. It is only one attendant that runs the car wash and then people drive up. So, I don't know, this...
Well, it's usually two or three people there, but I'm talking about the exit.
No, I understand that and that can be addressed. And that would come into play, we understood, for the planning board says, "You can't do anymore than just a car wash." But I didn't realize, you know, we were told that it's something different tonight. So, the planning board could say, "No, you can't put those vacuums in the back. You can't do that." But all those, all those bays, everything that was approved in 2016?
I can hear them. There's nobody... I have video that if you'd like to give me your email address, I can email...
You can submit them to us. We'll let you know. In the meantime, you can sign this? This is your continuance. I want you to print below and sign here, please.
Dave, there's another woman here that you got...
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah.
Hi, I'm Barbara Jean Dunko. I live on Vine Street, which isn't even on that map. It's, but I'm in a, I'm in a bar on the next street. Oh, I forget what the name of that street is there. I see two problems with this business and I understand business. I luckily work all week and I don't have to deal with it. If I'm on weekends, I come home, I wanna relax. Like she's saying, I can't even open my windows because all you hear is move up, move up. Like this, they're calling the cars up to move in line. People pull in. I didn't know those vacuums weren't supposed to be there. They turn the vacuums on. They're blaring their radios. There's a lot of profanity that goes on over there and nobody even, you know, talks about. So, it's not like you can really entertain or comfortably relax at your home after a long week at work. An even bigger problem though is safety. I can't tell you how many times I've come off of 140 to take a right onto Green Street and there's a car, if you don't stop right there, you would broadside them because they are across waiting to get into their facility to have their car washed. People park on the right side of Green Street. Their cars parked there. They redesigned the end of the street there coming out towards 140, that little loop. I don't know what that is. So, that even cuts down even more space between people trying to pull onto 140, people parking on Green Street and you're trying to pull off of 140 on the Green Street. I'm surprised you haven't had more accidents there. I think it's great they wanna get that traffic out of there, but it is, for me, it's a big problem. I pull off of Vine Street and sometimes you pull into a lane of traffic waiting to get into the car wash and yet you have to go around, go beyond them. And it's hard because sometimes there's cars parked on Green Street. You have to go around them to even get up to 140 to pull onto 140.
Seen that.
So, I, you know...
Well, so, in any event, in any event, if you would print and sign this, please. The vacuums need to stop right away. Especially the vacuums in the front need to stop right away.
The vacuums will be taken out of their shut-off.
And I think you need to get a hold of corporate, get their attorney in here because you shouldn't be doing this.
No, I understand.
So, please sign it.
Are you an employee of the company?
Contractor for them.
You're a contractor?
I've done it for 20 years for them though. And I do go to these all the time.
Okay.
If you look at the plan, you see how they have the bypass lane that they're proposing to go around that? And I'm sure we've all gone through that car wash, because I have. You have to hug the fence to go around, to get into the bay for the car wash. You'll never be able to get two lanes on that side of the building.
Exactly. You're 100% right. And what happened, from what I understand from Larry, is for them to approve all those, all those back bays, all the detail and all that, the fight of time that said, "You have to have a bypass lane." And so, they never should have approved that because if you have two lanes and a bypass, you can't get anything.
I mean, I'm just like a...
We don't need to go to a punk out here.
To all the abuddies, just wanna say, unfortunately, you guys are gonna have to come back to the next meeting. You know what I mean?
And we appreciate you letting us speak because perhaps we might not make it or something happens.
If you have information?
I want it.
Yeah, but we encourage you to come back to the next meeting.
Put your phone number on here yourself.
I haven't gotten any other documentation other than this that things have been changing over there. I don't know. You're talking about past meetings regarding...
We didn't either. We haven't either.
All we've had is a decision from 2016. So, this is new for us.
Okay.
So, everything...
The last car wash.
They did without permission.
Anything that was done, the vacuums, all that stuff, were not authorized. None of that stuff should be there.
They will address these. I agree with you.
I need any video. Is there work going on? Is there work? I need to know.
They gotta figure this out.
Yeah. Gary, would you give her my info? You have it, right? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
I can just quickly jump in. I don't have a stand plane or anything along those lines other than having, or your legal representation.
That will work.
Is there anything additional?
This will work.
Vacuums can very well be a noise problem. You better address those.
Actually coming here now.
Figure out what you're gonna do to avoid that noise.
Obviously, you're not gonna get two lanes, two lanes and that bypass.
No, I don't think so.
One lane.
You probably should really think about, that's way too many vacuums, especially when it's a buddy.
And they're backing up.
The types of vacuums. See how you can get noise mitigation and maybe get half of them in there? I know the last car wash had like six of them.
I believe it was seven that was located.
Seven, in the back, in the back.
Okay, in the back.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna, we'll meet with the neighbors before we...
Yeah, that's right. That's fine. Yeah.
That's how we do it. Thank you very much for not denying...
Do me a favor. It's, never mind. Ownership, ownership should be here.
I understand. And the vacuums will be shut off.
Okay.
Ones that are against the building.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
You probably should have the manager here too of the next meeting, whoever the local manager is.
This is terrible. If they're swearing and doing that, they would, the owners would be so upset. So, that should not be, that is a shock.
Besides the representation of management, I wanna see...
What is it? Franchise?
I wanna see a manager.
It's like a franchise?
No, they just own, they just own that many. But that is shocking. They should not be swearing and doing any of that. It's terrible.
We gotta move on to the next hearing, please. Is the applicant for, this is for...
Yeah, I know, but this...
13 Dominic Street? Thanks, Harry. Come on, right up front, please. Thank you, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Good job, Dave. Okay.
Were you guys given plans?
Yes, we will. If you can, is that the house plan? Put a site plan up on, if you can plug one up there. You got a site plan you can plug up there?
No, we don't. The site plan was given to Larry.
Not even a full site plan here? You don't have a site plan with you?
No, we were told just to bring the house plans because we gave the copies to Larry Dunn in that department.
How many site plans did you give out?
Six.
And not one of them got here. You got anything in the folder, guys?
I have some.
All right, I got one here. Okay. All right, why don't you have a seat while I read the hearing, please? All right, this is on the application of Daniel Rivera, 11 Oak Street, Bellingham. Special permit relief pursuant to Article 3 of the zoning bylaws. Does those provisions relate to a 6100, 16 square foot, more or less, parcel of land located on the southeast side of Dominic Street, known and numbered as 13 Dominic Street? Relief is sought to permit for the construction of use of, upon the subject property of a two-story wood-framed house as shown on the plan submitted with the application. I don't have anything but a site plan here, which I do. Let me just see what the application's indicating. The applicant is, was this a fire? This replacement of a fire? Was this your property or you bought it?
No, it was our property at the time.
Okay. Fire was when?
2013, February.
Yeah, so the applicant is trying to replace an existing property. There was a fire. I did actually go by the site. They met the requirements other than the Article of 2.5. There's no remains of a single-family home that was there currently at this point. But it looks like this is a replacement of the property that probably didn't conform, the house didn't conform before. So, this has gone to the town planner and the town, and the planning board at their September 5th meeting. The planning board has made a favorable recommendation. Town plan letter is attached. I'll paraphrase to save some time. The applicant requests a special permit to approval to allow for the reconstruction of a single-family dwelling on the property. The lot's non-conforming as to lot area width and frontage and the previous 24 by 36-foot house encroached onto both the front and side setbacks. However, it was destroyed by fire several years ago. The applicant now seeks to construct a 29 by 50 single-family house on the property. The new single-family dwelling will meet or exceed all setback requirements. The existing shed in the rear yard is to remain. Therefore, they went, they suggested a favorable report be sent off to this board. So, with that, Mr. Rivera, the only thing that I see on the plan that I, that is not identified is how close the shed is to the back and rear property line.
I believe it's right on the property line.
I saw it today. It's right on the line, Dave.
It's right on the line?
Yeah.
Because there's set, there's rear setback requirements for that.
Um, I mean, if, if that's the case, we can knock it down.
I mean, is it an old shed?
It's been there since we bought the place, so back in like 2004, or 2000...
Belli?
No, Dominic.
Dominic, foi in Dois Mitres.
So 2013, uh, 2003.
It's a pretty big one.
It's not too big, 12 feet, maybe?
Yeah, give or take.
I'm okay with the shed there, I'm okay.
All right, so with that, anybody here want to be heard? If not, board members, so this is a two-story house, is there house plans that you had planned on building?